Mayor LaRue, I think you're good to start whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Good evening, council, staff, invited guests, public. Welcome to our council meeting of Wednesday, March 10. And with that, I will start our meeting with our town commitment. So the council commitment for the town of Penetangwishing. We are grateful for the many gifts which have been bestowed on Penetangwishing and its citizens, including the gifts of freedom, opportunity, and peace that we enjoy. May we be worthy custodians of all that has been entrusted to us. We ask that all in attendance and those who could not be here assist us in promoting good government. May our decisions as members of council be enlightened and may we all be strengthened in our awareness of our duties and responsibilities. May we be granted the wisdom, knowledge, will, and understanding to preserve the good fortune of the town for the benefit of all and to make good laws and wise decisions. Thank you. And with that, we will go on to number four, the approval of the agenda and the regular council agenda of March 10, 2021, that the agenda of the regular council meeting of March 10, 2021 be approved as presented. A mover and a seconder, please. Councillor Cummings and Councillor Senema, all in favor? Thank you, that is carried. Declaration of pecuniary interest, if anyone so has, may declare at the opportune time. Deputations and presentations. This evening, we have three actually, and the first one, we start off with our presentation from Carol Lambie, President and CEO, Waypoint Center for Mental Health Care. Update, COVID response, strategic plan, research, and regional efforts. So Carol, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor LaRue, and members of council, and thanks for the opportunity to just present an update this evening on activities at Waypoint. I realize that some of you may know more about Waypoint than others, so I thought I would just start with a little background. As a specialty mental health hospital, we have just over 300 beds and we serve Simcoe, Muskoka, as well as up north to Perry Sound and to Dufferin County as well. In addition to our regional programs, we have the province's only high-secure forensic mental health programs for adult males. We also have a variety of outpatient and community programs that provide outreach to clients across the region. And you mentioned research in the title, we're also the home to the Waypoint Research Institute, and that is building on more than 40 years of research at the hospital. We do have probably between 12 and 1300 staff, and that includes a variety of clinical staff, psychiatrists, family physicians, psychologists, nurses, and so on, as well as all of the traditional hospital services, food services, housekeeping, administrative staff. Our annual operating budget is more than $150 million, and most of that goes to salaries and wages. And with many staff living locally and regionally, we're a substantial economic driver. So a little bit about mental health and addictions as well, and linking it to the pandemic. To start, I think we all know that mental health is an important part of our overall health, and I'm sure you've all heard the one in five statistic, one in five people experience mental health challenges. It also has a significant economic impact. It is the leading cause of disability worldwide, and that has a significant impact on our economies. Linking that to what is going on around us with the pandemic, 40% of Canadians say their mental health has deteriorated since a year ago. You can see the impact on youth as well. There isn't a facet of our lives that's been untouched, whether it's economic and financial distress, having children home from school and homeschooling. All of this is creating increased anxiety and depression. In addition, you can see the statistics at the bottom of the impact the pandemic is having on addictions as well. So turning to the pandemic, it seems we don't have a meeting without talking about COVID-19. Certainly, as a hospital, Waypoint has been part of the overall hospital system planning in our region and provincially. And as a hospital, we've also had to plan and respond to the pandemic ourselves to ensure we have public health and IPAC or infection prevention and control measures in place to keep both our patients and our staff safe. We do have a well-established IPAC team with experience in successfully managing outbreaks, certainly first pandemic we've experienced. And we've been adhering to all the government directives and public health recommendations around personal protective equipment, or PPE, physical distancing, and so on. We do have active screening for everyone for symptoms of illness, that includes staff and patients. We're very fortunate, given our physical infrastructure, that we could create a new unit where all of our admissions are admitted to and stay there. They're tested for COVID before they move throughout the hospital, and that's been a great mitigation for COVID cases. We, like all hospitals, have suspended visits with some exceptions, and we've reduced staff working in the hospital and more and more are using technology for staff and also for outpatient and community visits. And I'll come back a little bit to technology. I do want to say we're so appreciative of how hard our staff have been working. Cannot believe that it's a year, and I don't think anyone would have estimated that at the beginning, but the compassion and care that they deliver to our patients and clients and the community and their families, even under such challenging circumstances, is really nothing short of inspiring, and we're really thankful for that and the work they do every day. In terms of what has occurred at the hospital, we have had two outbreaks, both in January. The Awenda, which is one of our provincial forensic programs, and the Horizon program, which is our geriatric program. Out of that, in total, we had 21 positive patients, 28 staff, and then four onsite contractors and other people on site. Although this says nearly half of our staff have been vaccinated, we're actually up to about 70%, so we're very pleased and appreciative of that. We've had our geriatric patients and what are known as alternate level of care patients, so patients that have been with us for quite some time vaccinated, and we've just received word from public health that now the remainder of our patients are in the group that hopefully will be vaccinated next week. We have learned from wave one and now also wave two as we anticipate and hope that it doesn't come to fruition a third wave. But certainly, we've done a reflection back every time to make sure that we have updated our plannings. We're making sure that we're supporting both our staff and our patients to cope with the pandemic and the implications of it and providing wellness support. And one of the other things we know is really important is to make sure that we're regularly communicating with all of our stakeholders, and we're posting lots of information on our external website. I'll turn from COVID now, and just prior to the pandemic, we actually launched a brand-new strategic plan, which we were very excited about. And of course, year one has been derailed by the pandemic, but I thought I would just touch on each of the strategic directions, serve, discover, and lead, and talk about some of the activities that are underway in each of these areas. So certainly underserve, what we, in terms of providing patient care, has certainly changed as a result of the pandemic. I've talked about our outbreaks, our new admission unit. We're also supporting the system by planning for surge and adding bed capacity, so we have, again, the infrastructure to be able to do that. We're currently running, you know, probably 20 to 25 additional beds beyond what we normally would because of the need for mental health and addictions care. We are also trying to continue our support to the system broadly. We are adding medical directors, a real focus on children and youth, a medical director there. We did open the new community health hub very quietly, because of course, we have not had many people in, and our opening had to be done virtually. It is the home as well to the North Simcoe Youth Wellness Hub. That was a three-year demonstration project that we've just learned is receiving sustained funding going into the future. So we're very appreciative of that, and that is being done in partnership with many other organizations. Waypoint is just one of the partners. We're always focused on making sure that we provide evidence-based care to our patients. And one of the areas we're focused on currently is there are standards from Health Quality Ontario around the care of patients with schizophrenia, and we are implementing that in our hospital. And again, doing that and in trying to do it in a standardized way with partners across the province. Employee health, safety, and wellness. We were probably in year about four of implementing a psychologically healthy workplace for our employees, and certainly that's provided a strong foundation as we go through the pandemic. We've also partnered with Yale and done a survey on engagement and burnout, and are now looking at implementing opportunities to make improvements based on those survey results. Under discover, this is related, of course, to our research institute, but really, it's broader than that. We want to, we actually, we want the whole hospital to be a research institute, and so it may be implementing best practices in a variety of areas, not only clinical areas, but a few areas of focus here. We're doing some research related to the pandemic as well. We have a stop COVID project, which is studying Waypoint's response to the pandemic and allowing us to make improvements. And then in partnership with Georgian College and also RVH and Berry, we are undertaking an ECHO's study, or the effect of COVID-19 on healthcare providers, and looking at how we might be able to improve support and education for our staff. And then there is also a virtual mindfulness ambassador program, and there is information about that on our website. It is offered free to anyone who is interested in that. We do have a new Director of Research who's just joined us, actually, this week, last week. And we're currently recruiting for a chair, a research chair, related to forensic mental health research, and that's as a result of our unique role in the province with forensic research, and that is a partnership with the University of Toronto. And then our last strategic direction around lead. Just a couple of areas here to highlight. You may have heard of Ontario Health Teams. The more traditional Ontario Health Team brings together integration across general hospitals, primary care, and home and community care. What we recognize, as did our partners, there are about 10 of us in this Ontario Health Team, is that there are specialized services that need to be provided and cannot, there's not a critical mass of them that they could be offered in each Ontario Health Team. So we're actually providing specialized services to support the various Ontario Health Teams across our region. In areas of focus, of course, are mental health and addictions, children and youth, and also seniors' care. Another area where we are in a unique position in the province is Ontario Structured Psychotherapy. If you've seen the provincial strategic plan for mental health and addictions called the Roadmap to Wellness, one of the foundational pillars is the Ontario Structured Psychotherapy Program. It is fashioned after a very successful program in the UK, and it is providing psychotherapy free to residents of Ontario. There were and still are, right at this moment, four hospitals that provide it in the province. We are one of them, and currently, we are working collaboratively to expand this right across the province. We did open a new office on Jones Road in Midland, where although the therapists were doing most of the work virtually, they're actually going to be moving back into that site. And then lastly, but certainly not least, we are one of five hospitals providing a COVID frontline wellness program to support healthcare workers and other frontline workers. It was recognized early on in the pandemic that these workers were providing support to people with COVID was really taking a toll, and we need to actually care for the caregivers, and so that program does that. So with that, Mayor LaRue, I want to thank you and members of council for your attention and for making mental health a priority. We know that we can't have a healthy society without good mental health, and we just really want to share that message. So I thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Members of council, does anyone have any questions to Carol? Maybe we could put our screen over now, please. Thank you. Yeah, are there any members of council that have questions to Carol? Councillor Vettibon, Carol.
Thank you, Mayor LaRue, I don't have a question. I just wanted to compliment Carol on her presentation. I thought it was excellent. Thanks for the update, Carol. I always enjoy when you come and give these updates to us. The Mental Health Center is a major employer in our town, and certainly, you demonstrated through this past year the flexibility and adaptability to be able to adjust, to deal with the circumstances around the pandemic. So thank you very much, and it was nice to hear your presentation.
Anyone else? Comments? No. Therefore, Carol, thank you again for a very precise and informative report. Well done, and thank you again. We can honestly say that Penetangwishing is more than pleased to have Waypoint within our community. So thanks again, Carol.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. So now, council, moving on to our second presentation. It's a presentation from Cathy Kate, the General Manager of the Southern Georgian Bay Chamber of Commerce, Re Georgian Shores Boat Tours. And Cathy, I don't know if you have any of the guys with you. If you do, you might want to introduce them, and if they're able to come on, it would be nice to see their faces. So I get, give it to you, Cathy.
Thank you very much, Mayor LaRue. And yes, we do indeed have the boat owners on the line, Wade Pluse and David Schofield. So good evening, Mayor LaRue, Town Council and staff. I'll share my screen.
Sorry, Cathy, is it possible for you to turn on your camera and any of the other members that are a part of that? Just so we can see your faces as well as the shared screen.
Sorry about that. And are you able to see my screen now?
Hi, guys. Dave Way from Georgian Shores here.
Hi, Dave.
Are you able to see my screen, everyone?
No, we're not, Cathy.
We see you, not your screen.
I can see it.
Oh, well, I don't know. I certainly don't.
I see Cathy.
Yes, we see Cathy, but there it is.
Okay, I apologize.
No problem.
Got it.
Alrighty, so good evening, your worship Mayor LaRue, Town Council and staff. Thank you so much for allowing the Chamber of Commerce to present tonight on behalf of Georgian Shores Boat Tours and the New Island Princess Boat Cruise. So I will provide a brief overview, and as mentioned, we do have the owners on the line, Wade Pluse and David Schofield, and they, I'm sure, would be happy to answer any questions that you might have following this brief presentation. So the Island Princess, you may be familiar with. It was docked in Arilia and sailing on Lake Kuchiching since 1984, so for about the past 36 seasons. This past fall, the team at Georgian Shores Catering purchased the boat in order to bring it over to our region and sail on Georgian Bay, offering a variety of themed, exciting, new public and private cruises to residents and visitors in the region. At full capacity and without COVID restrictions, the Island Princess accommodates up to 200 passengers. You can see it's a double-decked boat. The boat is 66 feet long and 27 feet wide, and it has a draw of five feet. To give you some perspective of this, the Georgian Queen, which you all know currently docked at the town harbor, is 120 feet long and 16 feet wide. So the Island Princess is actually about half the length of the Georgian Queen, but 11 feet wider than the Georgian Queen. Again, based on pandemic restrictions allowing, the plan is to sail the Island Princess beginning on July 1st with an inaugural cruise, a celebratory cruise, right through until Thanksgiving, Monday, October 11th. The public schedule will feature a lunch cruise and an afternoon sightseeing cruise daily, so it will indeed sail seven days per week with intermittent evening cruises, which might include something with live entertainment, a themed cruise, themed menu. And you can imagine, this is where Georgian Shores would really excel. So it would be seven days a week, hopefully, from the Penetangwishing Dock. And this is just one of our owners, a little visual display on one of his buffet. So this is David Schofield on the screen here. Significant promotions are planned and actually already underway to ensure that everyone in our region, from business partners, restaurants, attractions, tourism partners, know about this new cruise experience sailing from Penetangwishing. Tickets will primarily be sold online and in advance of the cruise on the new website. We have developed day trip packages and are now promoting these to many tour operators, social clubs, probus groups, church groups, that type of thing, throughout the GTA and Central Ontario. And believe it or not, we are getting bookings on those. People are optimistic, especially for a latter part of the summer and into the fall, that day trips will be back up and running. So these are exciting promotions. These day trips will incorporate not only the cruise, but area attractions, other restaurants, and our goal really is to drive visitation to the entire region. This will be good for the entire region of North Simcoe. And the owners are expecting to be hosting many social celebrations, private events, weddings, and that kind of thing, private charters, especially beginning in 2022, once the pandemic has really retreated. So lots of opportunity for special events onboard the Island Princess. The Chamber of Commerce, our role, we have taken on a role this year to sell tickets and promote the Island Princess Cruise. We are in the process of hiring a full-time person who will begin in June and will work full-time, as I mentioned, right through until Thanksgiving, and hopefully, out of the information office at the town of Penetangwishing Dock, so taking up a bit of space in that office. This staff person will also be promoting other attractions, restaurants, members of the Chamber of Commerce, and other things to do in the region. So this will be just another wonderful representation at the Penetangwishing Dock. So that is a very quick and brief, I guess, overview of what's planned. We're very excited about that. And I think I can speak on behalf of Wade and Dave and let you know that we're very excited about this initiative and to just driving visitation and awareness to the area and really elevating the tourism presence. So that, on behalf of myself, thank you so much for allowing us to present again, and I'm sure if you have questions, Dave and Wade will be happy to answer if I can't.
Thank you, Cathy, and maybe now Sarah could bring us back to our screen, and I can take it from there. Thank you. So members of council, do we have any questions, concerns to the owners of the Island Princess? Or to Cathy? I see Councillor Levy.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say, as a business owner in our town that's been so very hard-hit in the last three years, actually, I'm absolutely delighted. These guys are great, their product is great, and their new product, brought to us at the town dock in Penetangwishing, is such a success story for them and hopefully for the rest of us on the Main Street. I am just absolutely thrilled, and yeah.
Thank you.
The day I woke up, the day I woke up and saw this on Facebook, I just thought, okay, this is it. We can keep going. So thanks, guys.
Thank you, Debbie, so much. Thank you.
Councillor Mayat.
Thank you, your worship. I'm excited, too. It's really interesting to see a new cruise ship or line, whatever you want to call it, back on the Georgia Bay. Just a very, really fast question. How far out are you guys going to go with the boat? Like, you're going to go past Bosa Lake, or you're just, like, how far do you go? Just curious.
We're going to be deferring that expertise to Captain Steve. A lot of you may know who he is. He was the captain also on the Miss Midland. For our boats, you know, we like, part of the reason we love Penetang, you know, also because of your commitment to us as well, is the waters themselves work very well. With the boat being a bit wider, we don't want to go into the larger waters. So how far? Well, it's going to depend on the function and the actual charter. Yeah, but I mean, it's the same type cruises. The length of the cruises will be an hour and a half, two and a half hours. You know, so, and they can be longer. There's lots of waterways, you know, as we all know, Captain Steve is a master of the seas around here. So he knows lots, he's shown us lots of routes that can work for any type of length of journey.
Thank you.
Further questions to Deputy Mayor?
Not a question, your worship. Just want to echo Councillor Levy's excitement. We're certainly looking very forward to having you at the dock and adding tourism flavor to our. So, welcome to Penetangwishing.
Thank you so much for your support. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councillor Cummings.
Thank you, worship. Welcome, guys. Just a reminder to council that we will be dealing with this in committee of the whole as well, so you'll get some further information as well at the committee pool.
Thank you. Anyone else? No, we're good. So guys, yes, welcome to Penetangwishing. It's very exciting for the town, and we're looking forward to having you here along with your Island Princess, for sure. And as Councillor Cummings has pointed out, in our committee of the whole meeting further on, we will be giving instructions to staff to proceed with an agreement, and hopefully, that all will be fruitful and that we will be cruising on Penetangwishing Bay, July 1, on the Island Princess.
Thank you so much, guys. Thank you for your help and making us feel welcome. Cheers. Cheers.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cathy. Okay, moving on now to our third presentation. It's a presentation from Bill Cornone, Chair of the MBLDC, UNESCO Global Geoparks. Now, I don't know that Bill may be accompanied by Cam Broman on Tony Pigott, so we pass it on to you, Bill.
You're on mute, Bill.
I just did that. Oh, where's my screen? There it is. So thank you, your worship, Mayor LaRue, councillors, staff, and the public for the opportunity to introduce you tonight to something very exciting. My name is Bill Kurnahan. I'm the Chair of the Midland Bay Landing Corporation, which is a separate municipal services corporation who are responsible for the development of who are responsible for the development of the Midland Bay Landing property, which is the 40-acre former Unimun property. With me tonight are Cam Broman and Tony Piggott from Brand Trade. They, please wave. They are joining us tonight. So Cam, first of all, Brand Trade has been engaged by Midland Bay Landing Corporation to undertake the study that we're going to talk about tonight because of its unique experience. They are economic development and branding consulting folks. Cam has worked globally with UNESCO. Tony is the former CEO of an international marketing and branding company. So they bring to us a depth of experience, not only with UNESCO, but knowledge of geoparks and branding abilities. So as I said, we have undertaken the study and the corporation is doing the study, which we expect to be completed in about six months by July. And we are footing the bill for the study. So what is a UNESCO Global Geopark? It is a large unified geographical area that has many sites and landscapes that are of international geological significance. And they're managed holistically for the protection, education, and sustainable development. These are the hallmarks of a UNESCO relationship. So the Global Geopark uses the geological heritage, but it combines it with the history and culture of the area to promote awareness and to promote the economic wellbeing of local communities. And as they say, as at the bottom, it's celebrating earth heritage and sustaining local communities. So what do I mean by that? So we already know that we have wonderful physical assets and we have the culture and the history that have been influenced by those physical assets. The Great Lakes that we have influenced the indigenous, the Francophones, the voyagers, and traders to all come to our region. We have already the natural heritage of national parks, provincial parks. We have Wymarsh. We have the related First Nations Islands. So our wonderful geography and the history that has been influenced by that geography makes us, the whole region, a perfect candidate to become designated as a global UNESCO geopark. What's interesting is we're already known as the gateway, the gateway to the UNESCO biosphere, which runs all the way up the eastern side of Georgian Bay from the Severn River all the way to the French River. So we have the opportunity now to link together with the biosphere and all of the physical assets that we have. So UNESCO Global Geoparks, there are already 161 UNESCO geoparks in 44 countries, and five of them are in Canada. Stone Hammer in New Brunswick, really surrounding the area of the Bay of Fundy, Tumbler Ridge in B.C., Perse in Quebec, Discovery in Newfoundland, and the Cliffs of Fundy in Nova Scotia. In addition, so those are already in place. In addition, there are eight more aspiring geoparks. They are new ones that are aspiring to become designated. And what's interesting is the geopark program only allows two applicants per country per year. So we would be joining a unique global club. And we would become members of the Global Geopark Network, which is the International Association of all of those geoparks. And a hallmark of UNESCO and the geoparks is the sharing of information and the sharing of all of the research that they're doing. So there are really 10 focus areas of the Global Geoparks. This is not meant to be an eye test for you to read all the fine print. But a lot of it is really based upon the physical assets of natural resources, the geological components. Culture and sustainable development are really big hallmarks of what we believe that we have already in this region. And part of UNESCO, the E part of UNESCO, is education. So imagine an educational component that came out of this, whether it was research and education into the indigenous and Francophone culture as an example of our area that we can then show off to the global tourists. So by joining this global network, we're not only looking at this nationally, this is now global. So we have now expanded our horizon for opportunities to a global opportunity. And tourism has changed. They're more interested in experiential tourism and also ecotourism. So there's huge opportunities for us. So why should we become a UNESCO geopark? Well, we already would be utilizing the cultural, historic, and geographic assets that I've already mentioned. But what's really important is this initiative would really contribute to helping the municipal strategic plan objectives. Yours focuses a lot on economic development. This will only tend to stimulate this even further. It also would develop an integrated regional vision and brand so that we pull together all of this into one big, integrated regional brand. We just heard from Wade and Dave talking about the Island Princess. Think about other opportunities to expand beyond that, taking tours out to the different islands, celebrating the different places that we already have, but doing it collectively together. This is about the strong collective. And what comes out of all of this is not really woolly. It is results that are actually measurable. You can measure the economic growth and development that would come from this. There would be considerable private investment that would follow on having this designation. And what's really important is there would be new tax revenue that would be generated that would help to sustain your community. And that is really a core piece of this sustainable community, which is means good jobs, good growth, and sustainable. It becomes a catalyst for growth. And we've learned from developers. And they've told us this is not an impediment to development. In fact, it's encouraging development. It becomes the stimulus. And that is a very important piece that we have learned, that we don't want to constrain development. We want to encourage it. And we've already heard that from the development community. So having told you all about that, we're really introducing you to the study that we're undertaking. And the study is going to look at the assets that we have, answer a lot of questions that are part of the UNESCO designation process. It was going to look at what kind of governance organization we should have for this global geopark and to look at the costs involved. And then come back with the study that we will share with you. But in the meantime, we want to provide you updates on the feasibility study of all the new things that we're learning and the opportunities ahead as we come together. And then we would really welcome your engagement of how we collectively shape this big new geopark vision. So today, we're just introducing it to you. You probably will have some questions, but we are looking forward to your participation in the future. Today, as we said in the beginning, we're not asking for any resources. We're not asking for any money today. We're asking you to learn about this. And as this gets shaped, then we want you to be involved in shaping what that long-term vision would be because it's wonderful for the collective whole of the region. So once we do this, you see that I have altered the sign. No, eventually, we would be directing people to this new UNESCO Global Geopark. So it's way bigger than the region. This is wonderful for all of us. It's a great stimulus to future growth. Thank you. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them or direct them to Cam and Tony. But thank you for the time to introduce you to this very exciting opportunity.
Thank you, Bill. And with that, I will open it to questions from members of council. Councillor Levy. You're on mute. You're muted.
Mute?
There we go.
Yep. I would just like to ask, how many meetings has your organization had with Bozalay First Nation? And what's the status of your working with them?
So we have, in accordance with the protocols set up, we have asked to have a meeting with the Bozalay First Nation. We have reached out to them officially, but we have not established a date. But they are very, very much part of this whole UNESCO application.
So you haven't met with them yet?
We have not met with them yet. We have reached out to them. They know who we are and they know they have been at, Brand Trade has introduced themselves, but we haven't had an official meeting with them as yet.
Okay, thank you. Supplementary, Mr. Mayor. As Penetangwishing's representative on EDCNS, have you been working with Sharon Bay and the EDCNS organization?
So to date, Tony and Cam have received huge amount of information from ECDNS, the Cultural Alliance, and many, many others. The list is very long. And I've said to them, you've asked for a lot of research and now you have a whole bunch of analysis and reading to do. So yes, that has already started as part of our study.
I haven't seen anything on our agendas.
Well, right now, most of it has been reaching out to obtain information. But Tony, do you want to, or Cam, do you want to add some more to that?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we do.
Yeah. Well, we've spent the last three weeks accessing public domain reports and studies on various websites, Town of Midland, Town of Penetang, Tay and Tiny, as well as, you know, Huronia Archives, the Economic People and Strategic Reports and various other, as Bill has mentioned, a big pile of studies and reports to read and process the content. So we've also had a number of key informant interviews. I regret to say we have not reached out directly to the Economic People, but we'd like to do that very soon.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Further questions to Bill or Cam or Tony? Councillor Senema.
It certainly sounds very, very interesting. Thank you for the presentation. I'm curious that the, one of the measurable results, new tax revenue to sustain the community? It just from increased activity? Or is there, are there actual tax benefit?
No, what we're anticipating, in fact, is additional economic growth. We see from many other geoparks, new businesses starting. And so consequently, there is new tax revenue that would come to the area, not just to Penetangwishing, but to the whole area. It's the amount of growth is really quite remarkable.
If I can elaborate on that just a bit, there's a million-dollar study from the UK on the economic impact of UK geoparks. There are four geoparks in the UK. There are four case studies. It shows definitively the way that economic growth with a geopark takes place. And I think a term that maybe hasn't been emphasized in this conversation yet is that geoparks are becoming increasingly popular globally because they're feeding into the fastest-growing sector of global travel, which is geotourism, or ecotourism, or experiential tourism, or place-based tourism. And I just finished reading the Heart of, well, the Heart of Georgian Bay, the Cultural Alliance Tourist Plan. They have a great deal to say about this new tourist and this new tourism. Geoparks feed into that in a very specifically economic way. And this is well-studied. And anyway, just wanted to introduce that into this conversation.
Very good. Thank you. Further questions, concerns, comments? Okay, they're being done. Bill, thank you very much. Very informative, very enlightening report. So thank you to you, Cam and Tony.
Thank you very much, your worship.
Yeah, we look forward to your feasibility updates.
Okay.
Worship, we will keep you informed.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, council, we move on to 7:00 a.m. Minutes, Council of February. The following minutes of council meeting be confirmed and adopted as circulated. And that is Council of February 10, 2021. Mover and a second of these. Councillor LaRose and Deputy Mayor, all in favor? That is scary. Thank you. Moving on to 8:00, Consent Agenda. And there, there's a memo to council, re a bylaw for Dupuy Drive. And this was given to us after the agenda. And so Madame Burke, could you maybe speak on this?
Thank you, your worship. I'll actually ask that our Director of Planning and Community Development speak on it just because she has a better sense of what's happening. And just for clarity, the memo was there, but there was just some additional information included on it. So if anybody had read it in advance, we just updated it with some additional information as well as that additional bylaw, as was mentioned.
Okay, so thank you. Andrea, if you would, please.
Certainly, thank you very much, your worship, and members of council. So as you might expect, in any Penetangwishing town deal, there's always something that comes up that's old and historic in nature in our very interesting community. And so that is what has arisen during the legal investigations to facilitate the land sale of 12 and 14 Dupuy Drive. Two things have become apparent. One is that the ancient title of the Dupuy Drive is actually not in the Town of Penetangwishing's name, although records we have go back into, you know, the 60s about the town using it, maintaining it, and building permits and so forth happening on the Dupuy Drive. It's a largely forgotten paperwork exercise that our lawyer is suggesting and recommending that would be appropriate to pass a bylaw that just confirms the town's intent with respect to that road while he continues to follow the paper trail to get the actual legal title ownership to the land. So that's the first part of the memo. What was updated was a second bylaw on tonight's council agenda has to do with that oddity in the Planning Act. And if anybody's been, understands like the consent process or the Planning Act, what weirdly happens is we own two properties side by side. If they haven't been owned or created through a planned subdivision or through a consent, they will merge together and consolidate. And that's what actually is happening with these two properties is that because of the way they're created, Georgian Bay Native Women's Association is going to take them and therefore they're going to merge and become one. And that was never council's intent and never what they were intending to acquire from the town. So to fix that, there's a bylaw that we will acquire a strip of land, very small in size, quite like a one-foot reserve in the middle of the two properties, which will ultimately divide them for the future. And so that was the recommendation and the solution that our lawyers have provided. So hopefully that provides as much information as I can on the two bylaws being presented tonight and the reason why they are coming forward.
Okay, thank you, Andrea. Since through to Andrea on this. Okay. Thank you, Andrea. Since through to Andrea on this. If not, then we will include it in their considerations of bylaw, that they could change, and make it 2021-19. Is that correct? I see Stacy shaking her head, so.
Sorry, your worship. I'm just noticing on the agenda that the normal motion to accept this consent item for information is not there. So if we could just get a mover and a seconder for that, and I'll include that within the minutes.
Okay.
My apologies.
No problem. So a mover and a seconder for the memo to council, the re the bylaw for Dupree Drive. Counselor Cummings and Counselor Levy, all in favor? Thank you. So now we move on to nine A, matters for consideration. And that is the Integrated Accessibility Standard Regulation Policy, HR 2021-02. That council approves the proposed policy and that staff be directed to circulate the approved policy and post it on the town website. Are there any questions, concerns, comments on this? If not, a mover. Counselor Mayat, seconder, Deputy Mayor, all in favor? That is Gary, thank you. We move on to A, Committee of the Whole, that is Committee of the Whole, February 10, 2021. And that the recommended, recommendations contained within the Committee of the Whole report related to the recreation.
Sorry, your worship, sorry again.
Hello?
Sorry to interrupt your worship. We just had another item, actually, another few items in matters for consideration. You have the Town Gateway Project.
Maybe I'm on the wrong side of the page, Steve.
It's possible.
Maybe, sure. I'm, I'm on the flip side. The next time I'm getting my agenda done, only on one side.
One side, okay. We will make a note of that.
Okay, so moving on then to B, Town Gateway Project and Funding Opportunity, RCS 2021-07. The recommended action is that Option A be approved as outlined in the staff report, and that Concept 1A be incorporated into the engineering designs, maximizing the height of the angels as much as the budget will allow. And further, that an application to the Federal Legacy Fund for the project be submitted. And finally, that a staff report regarding 9845 County Road 93 be provided for council's consideration once the results of the funding application are known. And that is Town Gateway Project and Funding Opportunity. So with that, I will get a mover and a seconder and get it up there for discussion. Mover, Counselor Cummings, and second by Deputy Mayor. Okay, so open for discussion and concerns and questions. Does anyone have any concerns, questions to, to Sherry? Doesn't appear so. So I guess we're going to be good with the staff recommendation. So all in favor? That is Gary, thank you. Move on to C, Federation of Canadian Municipalities, a Municipal Asset Management Program. ENG 2021-04, recommended action that council approves the submission of an application for funding to the Federation of Canadian Municipalities through the Municipal Asset Management Program. And the past resolution includes language reflecting the exact dollar amount of $43,400. Mover and a seconder. Counselor Clu, and seconder, Counselor Senema. Questions or concerns on that one? There being none, all in favor? Thank you. Moving on to D, 2021 CAO Performance Evaluation and Process, HR 2021-03. The recommended action is that the Chief Administrative Officer Performance Management Policy be approved as amended, and that council approves and endorses the executive core competencies as amended that are outlined in the policy, ATT2 Executive Core Competencies, and that council endorses the mayor's appointment of Counselor LaRose to participate on the Committee of Council for the 2021 CAO Performance Evaluation Process. So perhaps I would get our HR person to just guide us through that and give us an update as to where we're going with this. Tammy?
There we go. I think I'm working now.
Yes, you are.
All right. So I've presented a report just with some updated core competencies. So we actually adopted the core competency framework with our senior management team. So we actually went through the, we used the former ones we had established and used them as our baseline and streamlined them. So we kind of made them a little bit more succinct so that there weren't too many. Because as you can imagine, with, with core competencies, they're, they're supposed to not be too many. So that's why we tried to get them as succinct as we could. And then we just adopted that to, oh, we just adopted that to, for the tool to, sorry. I have to just put you on pause for a second. My apologies. So we adopted the tool so that it matched those core competencies. We also, from the initial one that we had presented in 2019, we made it more succinct so that it was more checkboxes with the ability at the end to provide comment. And I think those are the, those are the key changes that we made. We are still planning to incorporate or to use our third-party HR professional from the township of Severn to facilitate the process. That individual is as well going to come in. We're going to set up a scheduled training meeting so that they can go through the tool with you, just to make sure that you're comfortable with the tool and how to utilize it. And then she will as well facilitate the coordination of summarizing everybody's comments into one final draft. And be, of course, support to all of council throughout the process. Any other comments or questions?
I think from what I know and see you've heard, I think, Tammy, you've pretty well covered it. But open it to questions or remarks from members of council. And I see first card up was Counselor Levy. Counselor Levy, are you there? No, you're still muted. Unmute. There you go.
Okay. My question through you, Mr. Mayor, would be to Counselor LaRose. Dan, as you know, last time, the big sticking point was, do we get to sit down in an in-camera meeting to discuss the results? And I know you were adamant about this, as was I. So will that be part of the framework?
Counselor Levy, it will be part of the framework in that sense, but it will be done with the HR person that is going to be doing the review. She will be present, and it will be with council before it goes to the CAO. But it's not going to, it will be an open meeting. It will not be an in-camera meeting.
I directed that question to Counselor LaRose.
Well, Counselor LaRose can speak on it. Counselor LaRose, you have a comment?
Just a little one, your worship, to Counselor Levy. That is, the mayor did explain that well. That is the way the process is going to go. Our small committee is going to have a quick go at it. Then it, all members of council will fill out their sheets and forms. Then it gets done up in Severn, and then council will meet as all of council to do and okay the final draft before it goes to the CAO.
Dokey dokey.
Counselor Cummings.
Thank you, your worship. I have a concern with that because the policies that are in place here overlook council when it comes to the CAO's self-assessment, and it overlooks council when it comes to presenting to the CAO. So if it's not in the procedure, then it's going to happen like it happened last year. And I'm not really happy with that because I believe all of council should have an input. This is very important for us because we need the right people in place. And so I'd rather have it in the procedures than not.
Counselor Cummings, to begin with, the CAO's self-assessment performance will be a part of your package when you do your own assessment. So you will have that.
It doesn't say that, though, your worship. It says it's only provided to the Committee of Council.
Tammy, do you have a answer to that, please?
Yeah, I think there's two, a couple of parts through, through your worship. So the, the one part is, I think what you're speaking to Counselor Cummings is that that verbiage is missing. And I do, so what I proposed to do is to go into step three and add the verbiage that the, the final draft that is put together by the township of Severn will be brought back to council. So I, I would say that after number four of step two, that we add in some, another section that says that the township of Severn HR will provide, the Committee of, will provide the final report to council. And, or to review, will review the final report to council. And of course, that will be a summary of everybody's comment. So I want to make sure you understand that everybody will have an opportunity to fill out their comments, and those comments will all be brought together in one final document.
Okay, and I would like to see that in, in our procedures. If that's, we're, we're passing these procedures tonight, and they don't happen to be in there. Also, Tammy, the, the self-assessment, we didn't get that last year as well. And it says that it's only going to be distributed to the Committee of the Council, which is only the three people. I'd like to see that prior to me doing my evaluation. Because last year I did an evaluation based on nothing. I had nothing in front of me. So it was worthless what I did. So I would like to see that in our verbiage as well.
Well, I'm thinking, Tammy, that, that I was under the impression myself that the CAO's assessment, his personal assessment would be given to all members of council. It would be made available to all members of council when they do their assessment.
I don't think that the policy speaks to that specifically, so I can fine-tune the policy, if that's the wish of, of council, to, to make that a definite, like a definitive step.
Yeah, it's in step two, number two. You revised it already.
Pardon?
Oh, I see what you're saying, yes. So, so step two, number two, provide, instead of the Committee of Council, just council. That's what you'd like to see, right? Okay.
Yeah. Okay, with that, Counselor Cummings? Okay. Any further questions, concerns? I see Vada Bonker, Counselor Vada Bonker first. George?
Thank you, worship. I'll defer to the Deputy Mayor. She had her card up first, and I'll, if, I'll let her go, so.
Okay, Deputy Mayor, if you will.
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to also mention that the self-assessment and the goals that the CAO has brought forward in a six-month or year, that'll also be included in the package.
Exactly, true. Okay. Okay, now, Counselor Vada Bonker, further comment?
Yeah, thank you, worship. Having gone through this, I, I think that, first of all, the form is much improved over what we had the last time. I think it's incorporated the strengths of the pure competency form and the older form that we did, that we used last year. So I, hats off to our HR department for creating this, this amended form. I think it's, it's a simpler form. I think the guidelines that were attached and have been developed are also very, very helpful. So I want to compliment the staff on the form. The policy, I think Counselor Cummings has spoken to what I was going to address with respect to introducing that one step, or sorry, that one, I guess it's a step in step two between four and five, just where all of council would have the opportunity to review the, the performance review before the committee presents it, presents it to the CAO. So I think that point has been covered. I just had one question, if I may, your worship, just to, to Tammy, because I didn't understand the wording. So it's just under step two, number one, where it says, "Human Resources shall coordinate its time to meet with council from the partnering municipality to provide them with the performance evaluation tools and directions and timelines for the completion." And I know the last time the HR person met with all of council and did exactly that, this council. It didn't meet with the neighboring, it met with this council. So I was just wondering whether that was just, was just typo, or maybe you could just explain that. Because I think, you know, if it, if it's intended to stay as it is, I think that there, there should be an introduction of a, of a step in there where council has distributed all the documents, given a little bit of, some guidance in terms of what to do, some timeframes, and then we can go out and do what we need to do. So anyway, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Your, your worship, I'll just speak to that step. I believe that step is, is just, we're going to involve the manager of HR in that step where that, I, I think that that was a missing link last time, where we didn't have Michelle come and do a training session. So I think that would be the best time for her to introduce all of the documents that you've required to review and, and just kind of go through the step-by-step on, you know, how to do that. So that's what that is saying, is that I would, I would reach out to Michelle at Severn and say, okay, this is where we're at, and then we're ready to move forward. And, you know, let's pick a time that works for council and, and herself. Does that answer the question, Counselor Vada Bonker?
Counselor Vada Bonker?
Yes, if I may, worship, yeah. So just in terms of wording, then, it's, "Human resources from the, from the partnering municipality shall coordinate a time to meet with council."
Yeah.
That would, that would make sense to me in terms of wording. It's, "Human resources from the partnering municipality shall coordinate a time to meet with council to provide them with a performance evaluation tool, blah, blah, blah." So I will clarify in my mind, just the way it's written there, it, I didn't understand it. So, thank you.
I will make that change.
That was my suggestion, too. Pardon? That would have been my suggestion as well.
Okay. So with these changes in, in the, in the motion, that they will be done, and that council is all quite aware of the process that we will follow, I guess what I would be looking for this evening then is that with these changes made, that we will proceed with the performance evaluation that is being formed, the core competencies that is being presented to us tonight, and that we're approving Counselor LaRose as part of the committee. So with that, could I have a mover? Deputy Mayor, seconder, Counselor Vada Bonker? Counselor Cummings, do you wish to speak?
Sorry, worship, do we need to put in this motion, the friendly amendment with the changes?
Yes.
Okay, so it would read differently then? And I think that's what the clerk wants to know.
Well, yes, of course. So, Madame Clerk, maybe you might want to make the changes then, and, and then maybe read, read it again.
Yeah, happy, happy to help, your worship. I was trying to sort of keep track of everything. And I think it's important that council understands what they're asking our Director of Human Resources to do, and that she is, is clear on it as well. I know there's a lot of, a lot of things that were said. So I think the motion that I was going to recommend is just at the end. So we have that the Chief Administrative Officer Performance Management Policy be approved as amended, and that council approves and endorses. And that council approves and endorses the executive core competencies as amended that are outlined in policy attachment to executive core competencies. And that council endorses the mayor's appointment to Counselor LaRose to participate in the Committee of Council for 2021 CAO Performance Evaluation Process. And my suggestion is that we add a section. And finally, that staff to be directed to amend the policy, further amend the policy, including the summary report being brought forward to council and the self-assessment and goals being brought forward to council. And the clarity that the HR report to council. So again, trying to keep track of it, trying to make sure that it's in the motion, which is not, this is not ideal, obviously. But are those the three points? And is that enough clarity for council to feel comfortable?
I would say so. Counselor Cummings and Counselor Vatimovka, are we good with that?
I would say so. I'm good with that.
Okay, I'm fine with that. I think our Director of Human Resources understood what we were getting at. So I think that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, so we're good. So I am...
So we need a mover and a seconder?
I had a mover. It was Deputy Mayor, I believe. And the seconder now is Counselor Cummings. All in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. So with that, we move on to can a Committee of the Whole, Committee of the Whole reports, February 10th, 2021, that the recommendations contained within the Committee of the Whole report related to the Recreation and Community Services Section be approved? Any questions, concerns? Okay, mover. Counselor Cummings and Deputy Mayor, all in favor? Thank you. That the recommendations contained within the Committee of the Whole report related to the Planning and Development Services Section be approved? Any comments, concerns, or questions there? There being none, mover, Counselor Levy, and seconded, Counselor Vatimovka, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you. That the recommendations contained within the Committee of the Whole report related to the Transportation and Environmental Services Section be approved? Questions, concerns, comments? There being none, mover and a seconder. Counselor Clu and Counselor LaRose, all in favor? Carried. Thank you. And finally, that the recommendations contained within the Committee of the Whole report related to the Finance and Corporate Services Section be approved? Mover and a seconder, Counselors Sanama and Counselor Mayeep. Questions or concerns? All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Moving on to 11 Presentations and Considerations of Reports Special Committees, there are none. Motions of which notice has been previously given, there are none. Notices of motion, there are none. And consideration of bylaws. So bylaws is being a bylaw to authorize the execution of a consent agreement regarding the lands mutually known as 1075 LaFontaine Road. 2021-15 being a bylaw to confirm the ownership and assumption of Dupree Drive in the town of Penetang Machine. 2021-16 being a bylaw to authorize the execution of a loan from the Hydroelectric Commission Reserve Fund for funding required for the concrete war structural repairs. 2021-17 being a bylaw to authorize the entering into of an agreement with Creative Outdoors Advertising for Transit Bus Stop Advertising, five-year term. 2021-18 being a bylaw to declare surplus and sell. 13 Simcoe Street, 17 Jury Drive, 224 Church Street, 171 Fox Street, 111 Church Street, 92 Shanahan Road, and 132 Church Street. And adding to that, 2021-19 is the bylaw related to the 1416 Dupree Lane bylaw. And so with that, council of the town of Penetang Machine introduces all those bylaws. And a mover and a seconder. Counselor Sanama and Counselor LaRose. And everybody in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. So we move on to question period from the media and the public. And I don't think we have any there. I don't know, Maureen is on tonight? I don't see. So with that, we move on to announcements and inquiries. And I will start with the announcement of the IT It Starts Campaign, March 2021. And with that, the town of Penetang Machine is proud to be participating in the It Starts Campaign. It Starts is a public awareness campaign designed to take a proactive step towards addressing racism and discrimination in Simcoe County and working to promote a unified community that encourages collective action against racism and discrimination. It's a public education initiative to promote a unified community that embraces acceptance, inclusion, equity, and diversity. This year's campaign is focused on action. It starts with, and we as a council say, it starts with us. Okay, with that, and as the clerk mentioned earlier, that at the end of our Committee of the Whole meeting, if everybody would kind of stay on, we're going to have a little more on these IT It Starts. Any other announcements? It would appear not. And any inquiries? There are none. Oh, Counselor Cummings?
Thank you, your worship. I was just going to say happy birthday to the town of Penetang Machine. We're 139 years old.
Yes, we are. Exactly. Yes. I see that Jan from the museum made us aware of that. Yep, 139.
He looked every minute of it.
Yes, yes, for sure. Okay, with that, we move on to our confirmation bylaw and that the confirmation bylaw 2021-19 be signed and sealed by the mayor and clerk. Mover and a seconder. Counselor Sanama and Counselor Vatimovka, all in favor? Okay, and motion to adjourn. Counselor Cummings, we are adjourned. And with that, council, we will move on to our Committee of the Whole. Okay, call to order approval of the Committee of the Whole Agenda, March 10th, 2021. The recommended action is that the Committee of the Whole Agenda from March 10th, 2021 be approved as presented. Mover. Counselor LaRose, seconder, Counselor Mayeep, all in favor? Carried. Thank you. Declaration of pecuniary interest, if anyone so has, do it at appropriate time. Presentations and delegations, all sections, we have none. A council information package, council information package of February 19, 21, and March 10, 21. Recommended action that the council information packages dated February 19, 2021, and March 10, 21, having been given due consideration, be received for information. Does anyone have any concerns or anything that they'd like to pull a thing? Counselor Mayeep?
Thank you, your worship. The one item I'd like to pull up was the information package on March 10th, 2021. And it would be item 4B.
Okay, thank you.
The Ontario College closure.
Yeah. Okay, do we have any other ones that many members of council like to consider pull or anything? If not, could I have a mover and a seconder for the balance, and then we'll deal with Counselor Mayeep? Counselors Sanama and Counselor LaRose, all in favor? Okay, and now Counselor Mayeep, if you would, on your item from the SIP?
Thank you, your worship. This is the item I was looking at. And of course, it's a, the closure of the Fire College in the Perry Sound area. And there's a few areas like Perry Sound, some of the township have written, I guess, to the government to keep this open. I think it's a worthy cause, but if, do we have the chief on? Paul, you on?
Yes, I am, Counselor.
I'd just like to know, like, to me, this is important because I think we sent quite of a few of our firefighters up there. So this is a very important item that we should try to push the government to keep it, to leave it open, to keep it open?
Okay, so Chief Ryan, would you have comment?
Sure. So through your worship to Counselor Mayeep, the Fire College over the last number of years certainly hasn't been able to fulfill a lot of the needs of the volunteer departments, in my opinion. Certainly not Penetang Machine's needs or the town of Midland Fire Department's needs over the last number of years. I think the government hasn't adequately supplied funding and that. We're a little bit more unique here in North Simcoe because council will recall that we had talked about a North Simcoe Training Center. But since then, Southwest Fire Academy has moved from the Delhi area to the Wabashine and Tay Township area. So we'll actually have a fire ground and fire college that we'll be looking at some type of private-public partnership in the future to bring to council. So we'll actually be able to send more firefighters to live-fire training and specialized training locally, literally like in Wabashine, without having to send them to the Fire College. So from way back in the day, if I can say it that way, when I attended the Fire College to what it is now, it's certainly been, has changed. And over probably the last five to seven, or maybe even 10 years, the Fire College has actually started to regionalize their training programs and move them away from the Fire College. So some municipalities, yes, would like to see it stay. In my professional opinion, as your fire chief, I see another opportunity closer to home to provide more training, even more cost-effective training in a public-private partnership locally and get more firefighters through on an annual basis than we ever could through the Ontario Fire College at this point.
Okay, because I was just trying to maybe write a letter to back up the other municipality trying to keep it open. But if, from the chief's opinion, okay, I'm happy with that then. Or if any other councillors have any comments, or should we still write, get the, is he or the mayor to write a letter? Just curious.
Counselor Cummings, you have commented question?
I would support what the chief says. I think if we can get something closer, that's more relevant for us. I think we're better off just to leave it alone. Chief, was there a building when you were taking training?
The building came after I completed my training, Counselor Cummings.
Thank you.
Okay, so Deputy Mayor? You're on, you.
Yeah, I just wanted to throw this out. This created a big discussion at county council meeting on Tuesday. And as our chief has indicated, a lot of the municipalities and townships are starting to band together and create information so that they can train their own fire people right on the spot or within a much closer area. So I'm very pleased with the comments that Paul has made. And I would not, at this particular time, suggest we need to send a letter.
Okay.
Thank you. Would you recommend that in our SIP, that we just leave it alone?
Yeah.
Paul?
Your worship, sorry, I wasn't sure that was directed to me. It's, in my opinion, as your fire chief, that I would just leave it alone. I think that our needs are going to be well-covered in North Simcoe and our partnerships with the other North Simcoe municipalities and the private partnership that'll be coming, hopefully, down the road for approval. So I think we can just leave it alone.
Okay, so Counselor Mayeep, you're good with that?
Yes, thank you very much for your opinion, Paul. Thank you.
I see clerk has her hand waving at me there.
Sorry, I tried to catch you before we went into the council information package. But we need to go back to item three, Declaration of Pecuniary Interest. I did receive a declaration from Counselor Sanama regarding a finance and corporate services item. 9B, which is the self-contained breathing apparatus replacement. And so she probably just missed that little opportunity for her to make that statement. So just wanted to give her an opportunity to do that for the minutes. And I did receive her form. And so she'll likely to re-clarify during that item because she'll have to remove herself from being the chair for that item.
Okay, that's good. Thank you. All right, so with that, then we will move on.
Sorry, your worship, sorry, we actually do need to just go back for Counselor Sanama to...
She has to say so, eh?
She does. She kind of does.
She has to say so.
Yes, thank you. I didn't jump in because the mayor said we'd bring it up further into the, in the time when it was going to actually happen. But yes, I did declare a pecuniary interest in that item due to the fact that both my son and my son-in-law are on the volunteer fire department. My son-in-law, he does actually live with us, so it could be construed as a bylaw.
Well done. Okay. Thank you, Counselor Sanama. And with that, we will move on to Section 8, Transportation and Environment Services. And with that, I pass it on to Counselor Clu.
Thank you, your worship. The first item on our agenda is the Consent Agenda. And the recommended action is that the following consent agenda items, having been given due consideration, be received for information. We have just the one. It's a memo to council regarding the Phase 3 Harbor Point subdivision and security reduction update. So just a bit of a summary, you'll recall that our last council meeting, we did deal with this matter. Although we've discovered now that in the agreement, the developer does need to pay the Thompson's Road extension costs that they are due to pay. And so we're holding back the securities until that invoice is paid up. Are there any questions about this? I know our Director of Public Works is here tonight. Seeing none, do we have a mover? Counselor LaRose, the seconder, Counselor Sanama, all in favor? That item is carried. Thank you. Moving on to matters for consideration, the first item tonight is on-street parking on Church Street. This is a follow-up report, of course. Report RDS 2021-07. The recommended action is that the preliminary parking aisle configuration depicted in Attachment Number 1 be approved and that public works staff proceed to complete exploratory utility investigations in the spring of 2021. And that if no conflicts are present within the parking aisle area, it is recommended that the Roads Division proceed to construct the parking aisle during the 2021 construction season. And that should utility conflicts be present within the working area, an estimate to construct the parking aisle will be brought back to council for consideration. Do we have a mover on this to get it on the floor? Counselor LaRose, the seconder, Counselor Sanama, questions? Counselor Cummings?
Got to get the right mouse here. I've got work and three mouses. Thank you, Miss Chair, Mrs. Chair. I think Public Works has done a good job here. I'm impressed that we can come up with six parking spaces. This is basically what we were asking for and saw no reason why it couldn't be handled. So hopefully, we can move forward with this.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor Cummings. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In reading the report, did I understand an estimated cost to do this was $25,000? I just wanted verification of that.
Yes, we'll go to Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through to Madam Deputy Mayor. Yes, $25,000 is the estimate to complete the construction.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? Counselor Vatimovka?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to comment that I'm pleased to see this report back on our agenda and with the recommendation that's there, and I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mayor LaRue?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a comment that we have to be aware of that the deputy mayor brought up the cost of $25,000. As long as we're aware, that is providing that there are no conflicts present in the parking aisle. In other words, services of any kind that would entail more expense. So I have no problem moving ahead with what is being proposed. But on the other hand, we have to hopefully... we have to hopefully wait and see if there's going to be added cost to this and what kind of added cost it would be if there are services that would have to be dealt with.
Right, thank you, your worship. But we're optimistic that this is the cost, and if not, then we will see this back at council.
That would be good.
Councilor Cummings, follow-up?
Yes, follow-up. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for the mayor's awareness piece, this has already been mapped out with utilities in the area when they decided they were going to narrow the roadway. So the utility should already be marked in those areas on, on drawings?
Well, the way I'm reading it here is as in, and that should utility conflicts be present within the working area, an estimate to construct the parking aisle will be brought back to council for consideration. So I don't know that they've been mapped out yet. Maybe we should ask our Director of Public Works.
Thank you, thank you through Madam Chair to Councilor Cummings. We are confident that, that the work can be done as, as outlined in the report. However, to, to be prudent and cautious, we are aware of a, an existing Bell fiber line that runs along the east side, the cemetery side of Church Street in that area. That was completed after the Church Street reconstruction, so it wouldn't necessarily be shown on that map. So we are being prudent in terms of our exploratory work. And that is why we've, we've added the resolution to the, to the effect that if we do run into conflicts, that we'll be bringing it back to council for consideration with a revised budget estimate. But we are confident that we should be able to do the work as outlined in the preliminary concept.
Thank you. Is that's also our staff doing it, correct?
That's correct, Councilor Cummings.
Okay, thank you.
I'm on mute. Thank you. Any further questions on this? Seeing none, we already have a mover and a seconder. All in favor? That motion is carried. Thank you so much. Moving on to item two here, awarding of RFP 2021-01. This is the Robert Street West well testing. Report W 2021-02. The recommended action is that the Robert Street West well testing project be awarded to Goldr Associates Associates LTD at a cost of $143,570 plus HST. Do we have a mover on this? Councilor LaRose, a seconder? Councilor Levy? Director of Public Works, did you want to speak to this one?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The recommendation is outlined in, within the report. The, the project being awarded tonight is a, is a Water Division capital project to do some monitoring and testing to determine what the TCE concentration within the Robert Street West well field is, is currently at. And this information will be vital and feed into another Water Division capital project, which is the class environmental assessment for the Piatt Secondary Water Supply. So that'll be a vital piece of information for that study.
Thank you. Any questions? Mayor LaRue?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick question through to Brian. I know that we have done this go around a number of times since the TPEs has been detected in those wells years ago. And just a quick question, Brian, is the two, I know that the last time it was done, the levels had gone down considerably. And just for our personal knowledge as to, how long ago was the last one done? And certainly looking forward to hoping that this one will show a decrease again, but how long was the last one done before this one's proposed?
Thank you. Through to, through Madam Chair to his worship. The last testing that we did was a 94-day test in 2012, where we ran the well at its full rated capacity of 3,300 cubic meters a day for 94 days. And the level of TCE over that period was on average about 28 micrograms per liter, which is a reduction of over 50% from the 60 micrograms per liter that the well was tested at in 2006, I believe. So it is the last testing has shown a decreasing trend, and we are hopeful that it, it shows another similar type drop in the, in the water, water system. For, for information of council and the public, for surface water, the, the limit of TCE concentration is five micrograms per liter.
Thank you. Any further questions? No, seeing none. So just for council to be aware, when you see that waterworks happening this year on Robert Street West, it's, if you get questions about that, that's what this will be. We already have a mover and a seconder. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Our next item this evening, number three, the advanced procurement of tandem snowplow. Report RDS 2021-08. The recommended action is that staff be authorized to proceed in 2021 with the procurement of the tandem axle snowplow as approved by council in the 2022 capital plan to assist in a timely delivery. And that payment for the approved procurement be made in 2022. As noted in the report before us tonight, there is quite a backlog on these items being delivered, so we're trying to get ahead of the wait. Are there any que, actually, I'll take a mover. We have a mover. Councilor LaRose, a seconder? Councilor Santa Ma, any questions about this item? Seeing none, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you. The last item tonight is the Midland Pennington Machine Transit System. This is a proposed fare increase. Report RDS 2021-09. The recommended action is that council approves the proposed changes to the fare card purchase price and transit fare structure as outlined within the staff report. And that council approval is contingent upon the Town of Midland approving the transit fare structures outlined with, within the staff report. Do we have a mover on this item? Councilor LaRose, a seconder? Councilor Cummings, any questions? Seeing none. It was fairly straightforward in the report. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Onto our referrals tonight. The referrals list is the Church Street parking, which we've just discussed. Accessible transit options. And the motion is that the Transportation and Environmental Services section endorse the following additional and existing referrals to upcoming agendas and staff. Do we have any discussion? Mayor LaRue?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just wondering if at this time we can remove the Church Street parking from from the referrals.
Thank you for that. I, I would think we could. We do have direction in the report tonight that it would come back to us if the cost changes. Are there any comments from anyone else? Are we okay to remove this? Councilor Cummings, do you have a request?
Yes, I, I would ask that we keep this on the list until it's actually been resolved.
Any further discussion? We'll keep it on just as a failsafe? Okay. Any further comments? Seeing none. Do we have a mover, please? Councilor LaRose, and a seconder? Councilor Santa Ma, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you so much. And the final question period from media and public. Again, I don't believe we have anybody, but we'll give an opportunity. No, seeing none. Back to you, your worship.
Thank you, Madam Clu, Deputy, or Councilor Clu. And with that, we will move it on to Section D, Recreation Community Service, and we pass it on to Councilor Cummings.
Thank you, your worship. Under our Section 7A, we have Consent Agenda. We have two items on the agenda. The motion would be that the following consent agenda items have been given due consideration, be received for information. One is for the Museum and Heritage Committee, and the second one is for the Trails Committee. Are there any questions or concerns? If not, do I have a mover? Deputy Mayor Dubois, a seconder? Councilor Santa Ma? Any other discussion? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Matters for consideration. The municipal alcohol policy. The recommended action is that the updated version of the alcohol risk management policy as provided in Attachment Three to this report be approved as the town's municipal alcohol policy. I think we'll get a mover and a seconder first for any discussion. A mover, Deputy Mayor Dubois, second, or Councilor Myet? Is there any discussion, concerns, questions? Deputy Mayor? You're still on mute, Deputy Mayor?
Oh, no, thank you. Very glad to see this brought forward. I did ask that our policy be updated. It has been updated. Lots of information and very pleased to see it on the agenda tonight. We certainly support it 100%. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else had their card up? Councilor Vadimovkhar?
Thank you, Councilor Cummings. I'll be supporting the, the policy moving forward to council, but I was just wondering in between today's meeting and our council meeting in April, if we could just run the policy by the OPP to see if they have any comments from an enforcement standpoint. I know they're, they're involved in enforcement when it comes to special occasion permits and, and whatnot, and they may have a comment there. And I don't know, and maybe Councilor Cummings, this is a question to the director, but with respect to special occasion permits, have anything, has anything changed in that area that, that we need to be aware of that should be incorporated in our alcohol use policy? I've just, I know we've made the changes based on the recommendations of the Simcoe Muskoka District Health Unit, but I was just wondering if there's any other changes that need to be incorporated. Thank you.
Okay, I will refer to the director for those comments. Cherry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through to Councilor Vadimovkhar. Certainly, I will reach out to the OPP following this meeting and have them review the, the policy and bring back any significant recommendations to, to Committee of the Whole or council. With respect to special occasion permits, I, I'm not aware of any significant changes to the update. The policy has been reviewed by our department. Those who are engaged with the folks that do the, the facility rentals specifically and acquire our own special occasion permits for our own events and whatnot. But I, and our senior team as well. But if there's additional review or consultation that you would like to have completed, I'm certainly happy to do so.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Vadimovkhar?
I was just going to say, thank you, Councilor Cummings. I'm not aware of any, any changes myself to the, to the process, but I do know that there were a series of changes. Certainly the District Health Unit has identified a number of them, but I was just curious with respect to special occasion permits, particularly around events, you know, where maybe there are events held by third parties and the requirements for those. But I'll leave it to you, Madam Director, and if you find out anything, you can advise us at, at council. Thank you.
Thank you. Item two, oh, do I get a vote? All in favor? Yes, carried. Thank you. Item two on our matters for consideration is the Island Princess. We've heard our presentation from the South Georgian Bay Chamber of Commerce. The recommended action here is that staff be directed to draft an agreement with Georgian Shores Boat Tours for the birthing and operation of the Island Princess from the municipal wharf as outlined in the staff report. And that the clerk bring forward the necessary bylaw and council approval. And finally, that the CIO and the Director of Recreation and the Community Services are hereby authorized to make minor alterations to the agreement that does not substantially change its content. I'll have a mover and a seconder before discussion. Do you get a mover? Councilor LaRose, seconded by Councilor Vadimovkhar? All right, it's open for discussion. Questions or concerns? Councilor Levy?
Yeah. My concern, Councilor Cummings, is the Georgian Bay Chamber of Commerce proposal that they be a full-time person in our tick office to sell tickets. First of all, most tickets will be done online. And secondly, because it is paid for by the taxpayers of Pennington Angling, we've seen, we've all been around this before where they will promote the entire area, which I'm really on board with. But if it's our Pennington Angling tick, do we really want this Chamber of Commerce promoting all businesses all over the place? I, I think that needs a huge discussion from us. And I'd like to hear what other people have to say.
I believe it's in the report that, but I'm going to refer to the director on this regarding the use of the tick building or a Quonset hut. So I'll refer to the director for further clarification. Cherry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through to Councilor Levy. In the, the drafts, the agreement's currently in draft. It was just provided to, after our solicitors had a chance to review in late last week, to, to the co-owners of the, the boat tour company. But within it currently is options for them to either put a kiosk on the wharf to utilize the, the tick as is, however, within the operating hours that we currently have. So if we say operate till six o'clock or eight o'clock, that they can access the space that Midland Tours had accessed previously to, to sell their tickets. The other option, knowing that we have an anticipated renovation happening at the tick, is that they could look to, to pay for a part of a renovation that we would look to sort out at a later date. So that has been put out to them, but I have not since had an opportunity to, to discuss where their mind, where their head is at, if they still want all of those options in there. The intent was also to provide flexibility so that council would be aware of the potential of how that kiosk could move around based on things that, that can transpire prior at the wharf. The concept of the Chamber of Commerce operating there full-time was new to me as well this evening. I understood that there was someone going to be selling tickets on behalf of the Island Princess, so that will certainly warrant, I guess, further discussion with the chamber. But what council's wishes are with respect to the chamber operating out of there, I'm happy to take further direction, further direction on, or provide a follow-up report once I have had a chance to discuss with them.
Yeah, that kind of surprised me too, that it was the chamber who said they were going to be in the tick office versus what we were discussing as the tour company being there. Are you satisfied, Councilor Levy, if we take a look into what's going on and either have a further report or report back to you?
I think the, I think I would like to deal with this outside of the chamber being in our tick office, but everything else is great. I, as I said earlier tonight, I'm just delighted that the guys are bringing the boat here. All good news.
Good. Thank you. Any other questions or concerns regarding the report? If there are none, then I'm going to call for the vote. All is in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next on our agenda is referrals to upcoming agendas. We have two. The outsourcing of the day camp and the municipal alcohol policy. The referral is that the recommendation is that the Recreation and Committee Community Services Section endorse the following addition, little additional and existing referrals to upcoming agendas for staff. The one for. The one for day camp, Boys and Girls Day Camp, perhaps the Director can, I was a little bit surprised at that, the Director can talk to us about the Boys and Girls of North Simcoe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So if you recall, there is an agreement that was recently secured with the Boys and Girls Club to do a one-year trial, and then I'm to provide a follow-up report to council to summarize, to see how that trial goes, and see if council wishes to proceed with that relationship, or to resume running our own day camp operation.
I just wanted to get that on the table because I was a little surprised when I saw that on Facebook one day, and I thought it was coming up on our referrals. But yeah, it's a follow-up report for the rest of council's benefit. Are there any items to add or take away? We've dealt with the municipal alcohol policy. Can we take that one away? Mover to take that one away? Deputy Mayor and secondar, Councillor Rose, all in favor? Thank you, Carrie. And for the other one, the outsourcing report, I need a motion for that. A mover? Councillor Mayette, second Councillor Sanamah, and all in favor? Carrie, thank you. That's it for us. Questions from the media and the public? And I don't see any. So it's back to you, your worship.
Thank you, Councillor Cummings. And with that, we will move on to eight, Section C, Planning and Community Development Services, and I will pass it on to Councillor Levy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Have I unmuted?
Yeah.
Oh, perfect, because I just got my agenda back up in the nick of time. So we'll move on right away to the consent agenda. We have, oh, dear. Okay, we have the bylaw report for February, we have Business Recovery Task Force Meeting, we have Memo to Council, February 24, 2021, Study Project Award, we have Memo to Council, Complete Applications. I'd like a mover and secondar for the consent items, if I may? Councillor Cummings, Councillor Sanamah? Any discussion? Anyone want anything pulled? Seeing none, all in favor? And that is Carrie, thank you very much. And moving on to matters for consideration. Redline revisions for draft plan condition changes, File Number 201901 Champlain Shores Foreplay Bay Mauring, PD 202116, recommended actions, that redline revisions to the draft plan of subdivision dated February 3, 2020 by Rodney Reynolds, Application File Number PEN SUB 201901, respecting 176 and 200, Fox Street be approved in keeping with staff report, PD 202116, and that the draft plan conditions for Plan of Subdivision application, File Number PEN SUB, approved in keeping with staff report, PD 2116. And finally, that the redline revisions and draft plan conditions be deemed minor under section of the Planning Act, therefore, no notice be given of changes. Now, we had much discussion at section on this, but I would like to ask Andrea, our planning director, Andrea Betty, to explain this for all of us. Andrea, you're on.
Thank you very much, Councillor Levy, and for you, to members of council. It is kind of a complicated topic about what's being asked and what's being recommended by staff, but largely, it's a fairly minor change to blocks on a plan of subdivision. They are subdividing one block that was approved by council into two new blocks. And what that does is it enables parts of the subdivision to proceed a little bit in advance because those lands will be getting a record of site condition, which is an important step in the development because of the historic use of the property as a brownfield, that those lands can get a record of site condition sooner. So it really enables the development to advance. So with the conditions, what we've suggested is that we also remove a condition that requires a record of site condition to be obtained in order to register the subdivision, and instead, there's language in there that indicate that the condition or the requirement for getting a record of site condition is sort of pushed further down the road and is a requirement of future agreements and obligations of the town. Ultimately, what council really needs to know at the end of the day with this is, this is a very complicated development, and there will be many opportunities where council will still see and have some sort of control over the development approval process and when certain things happen. And staff have had an opportunity to review this at length and are satisfied that what is being proposed and changes to draft plan conditions and draft plans is appropriate and adequate to help the developer advance this project forward while still protecting the municipality. And then probably to sum it up at the end, the recommendation about it being minor, you know, any changes to a draft plan, you know, could go back through a public appeal process in this case, because it is a, we felt a fairly minor change to the draft plan, as well as a technical change to the draft plan conditions, that it could be supported as minor, and therefore, no notice and no further appeals could be made with this file. But uniquely, this file has actually been given notice twice because of COVID, and no appeals have ever been filed in any event for the development. So I'd be happy to try and answer any questions. I know Brian Murray and I have been very involved in this file, so if we get too technical, I'm sure Brian can also answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you very much, Director Betty. Councillor Vadimovkour and I talked with you about this on Monday morning at great length, and we were very satisfied. So if anyone has any questions, please ask them now. Councillor Cummings.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have one question. Are we, there's going, apparently, there's supposed to be two Marina portions in the water lot. Do we collect water lot leases for those two water lots that are supposed to be dockage for their residents?
Actually, Councillor Cummings, I can answer that easily. I think we sold them to them.
Yes. Yeah.
So they no longer have a lease with us?
Okay, so we sold, when did we sell them?
Oh, three years ago, I believe.
Oh, okay. All right.
No problem. Councillor Vadimovkour.
Thank you, and I just wanted to commend staff and the developer for, and the developer's solicitor, I believe, for working through the challenges that existed with this particular subdivision. I think the solution that they've come up with will allow a significant portion of the subdivision to move forward, and the balance to wait for the remainder of the environment works to be complete. So as the Director has outlined, it took a lot of work by staff, but also developer was engaged, and I think they've come up with a great solution, and I just wanted to commend them for that.
Wonderful. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, did I get a mover? I think I did.
No, no mover, a secondar.
Silly me. I should have a mover there, Councillor Vadimovkour, right? Yes, indeed. A secondar? Councillor Mayette? And all in favor? And that's Carrie, thank you very much. Sorry, it's very awkward having a tiny little phone miss my second screen. Okay, we're moving on to Site Plan Exemption 201430 for 3 Robert Street West. That's just a minor thing. I'm sure you've all read the report. Are there any questions for Andrea? May I have a mover? Councillor Rose, secondar, Councillor Vadimovkour.
Sorry to interrupt, Madam Chair. We just didn't read that, we actually read the motion that council is moving and seconding.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's what I didn't hear for.
I know. Exemption from the town's site plan control by law 201430, oh, it left me again, be approved for an addition of 12.5 square meters for the property at 3 Robert Street West. Good enough, Stacy?
Yes, thank you. Just mover and a secondar now.
Okay. Mover? Councillor Rose, secondar, Councillor Vadimovkour, all in favor? And Carrie, thank you very much. Oh, this is gonna be fun. Update to the Municipal Law Enforcement Policy and Procedure Manual BL 202103, recommended action, that council approve the revised Municipal Law Enforcement Policy and procedural manual being policy PD 001 2021, in accordance with staff report BL 202103. Shall I have a mover and secondar to get it on the floor and actually follow procedure? Councillor Vadimovkour, seconded by Councillor Cummings. And discussion, please. Councillor Vadimovkour, did you have something to add to this? Oh, request to speak. Give her.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we did talk about this, the report and the policy extensively at our section meeting earlier this week, and we're pleased to see this come forward from our Director. There's a lot of good things that are in the proposed policy. There's a few little tweaks and whatnot that we've left with the Director to clean up a bit before it comes forward for the council meeting. But one of the things that we did talk about was to extend timelines so that it's clear in terms of what expectations are, not only for the complainant, but also the person who is receiving the notice of contravention. So you'll notice in the policy, it talks about, it's gonna be an initial response within two days, within two days, and then there's gonna be a site visit within five, and then if things aren't dealt with, then there's a notice of contravention. And then, you know, there's a whole series of steps. And what we thought that should be included in the policy are some timelines, so five days, seven days, 14 days, those types of deadlines, so that, you know, from a level of service, there's an expectation that's set to the Chair's point that she made in our section meeting, that's consistency, so that each complaint will be treated the same. And so we thought that that would be something that should be included in the policy. The Director commented about that sometimes situations are unique, that bylaw comes up against, and there needs to be some flexibility, and we acknowledged that. And we said that if there were to be some deviations from the timelines, we suggested that perhaps the municipal law enforcement officer talked to the Director about that to review this specific circumstances and then get some concurrence, and then the complainant would be advised that, okay, well, we're, we've just given so-and-so an extra, you know, three days to do whatever they needed to do, so, you know, because it takes that long to get the truck or whatever. So it's those type of things that we talked about at the section, to provide some consistency and some clear understanding for everybody involved, what is gonna happen with any bylaw complaints that are submitted. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Councillor Vadimovkour. Your insight to this was invaluable, and I think, as you will all know, we have a ways to go on this, but with George's feedback to the Director, we'll be able to bring something really good back. Councillor Cummings.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, I wanna compliment staff on the work they've done on this particular policy. I've been asking for this for about a year now, I think, when we, Andrea and I have talked about what I was looking for, for teeth and timelines and things like that. And I think this is a really good attempt at doing that, and I congratulate staff.
Well, thank you, Councillor Cummings. That's really nice to hear because our Director is our Director of Planning, not our Director of Bylaw, and she's put herself into the job and has carried the ball on this. So, yeah, we're on our way. Staff got the message that this was really important to council, and Andrea's done an outstanding job, so I'm glad you appreciate that. Thank you. Any other questions, concerns? Councillor Sanamah?
Yes, I just wanna reiterate, it's an excellent report, but I do, I go along with Councillor Vadimovkour from a timeline perspective. I think that, you know, we'll wrap it up really well so that not only do staff have, you know, positive expectations, but, you know, the complainants and the people that, you know, who may have the issues brought forward, that everybody knows what's expected. And it sounds good.
Thank you, Councillor Sanamah. Anybody else like to weigh in on this? So I think I had a mover and a secondar, pretty sure I did. Okay, Stacy says I did. All in favor, please? And Carrie, thank you very much. Oh, gotta get the little screen out. Oh, dear. There we go. We are down to referrals. Referrals of Planning and Community Development Services endorse the following additional and existing referrals to upcoming agendas and staff. We've got the graffiti policy, the municipal bylaw procedure review, which is well on its way, Prince Crescent bylaw concerns. I don't see anything that could be taken off. Could I have a mover and a secondar for this? Councillor Sanamah, Councillor Vadimovkour? Any discussion, questions, anything to add? Seeing none, all in favor? Fabulous. Thank you very much, folks. I'm, oh, questions? No, of course, there's no questions. Handing it back to Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Levy. And with that, we will move on to Section 9D, Finance and Corporate Services, and I will pass it to Councillor Sanamah.
Thank you very much, your worship. Under the consent agenda, we have the following consent agenda items. Having been given due consideration, be received for information, the Service Excellence Strategy Update, HR 202101, the Memo to Council regarding the Vaccination Clinic at the Pennant Anguishing Memorial Community Center, talk about that in a sec, and the Memo to Council, Re-CNCC Leasing Costs Update. If I could have a mover and a secondar, please? Mover, Councillor Mayette, secondar, Councillor LaRose. Any discussion? Councillor Cummings?
Perhaps we can get the clerk to update us on our policing costs?
Thank you for your vote of confidence, Councillor Cummings, but I think our CAO would be, would be the more appropriate staff member.
I meant to say, I meant to say CAO, sorry.
Good.
Thank you, Madam Chair, to Councillor Cummings' request. I think the memo is, articulates as much information as I have at my fingertips. The short of it is, we do, we did hear back from the ministry, and they have requested a meeting next week, as I've identified in the memo. So that meeting is taking place the early part of next week with their Assistant Deputy Minister at the ministry, as well as their Executive Director of Institutional Services, and I spoke myself and our Director of Finance. So an administrative meeting to talk our way through. I think the attachment to the memo, the second attachment articulates the ministry's initial comments on the matter, and probably the most important one is that they've confirmed there was no formal recognition given, or formal notification given, I should say. The other thing, the last thing I would mention that's not in the memo is that is that coincidentally, I have had one other municipality in Eastern Ontario reach out to me. So I've had some dialogue with that municipality. And there's, there's, he and I have been in, in back and forth, and he, in, at that particular municipality have similar funding concerns, but, but they're not the same funding concern. But conceptually, I think there's a lot of commonalities. And so we've started reaching out to other municipalities. And I, I think there's a move afoot to try to get a number of municipalities together. Should the ministry not wish to bring folks together on their, on their account? The hope is that municipalities themselves can collectively get together and, and discuss kind of an approach to move forward. So I think that would really be the, the update that I would provide to council and happy to take any questions if there are any.
No further questions? And while we're in the discussion, I just did want to make mention about the vaccination clinic that is going to be happening at the Memorial, the Penitent Hanger Machine Memorial Community Center. It will be, it will be set up starting next week, and I believe it's going to be every third week, but we'll, we'll see how that goes. But I think it's very exciting that we're going to be having that in town. So on that note, could we have a vote? Do you have the mover and the seconder? So the vote to approve? Favor? Motion carried. Matters for consideration, I am, because I have declared a community interest, I'm going to pass it over to Counselor Mayat to take over the chairing of this, and I will remove myself from the discussion.
Thank you, Counselor Sanamah. The matter of consideration, the item number one is the self-contained breathing apparatus replacement for FES-2021-01. Recommended for action that council approve the purchase of the M S A G dash one S C A, S C B A from Jay Stone Company Limited for $228,923 plus HST, and at the $14,953 plus HST for the Water Department. Fire chief is here, if we have any questions. But basically, this is to replace the old apparatus that we have at the fire hall and also at the Water Department. And it was part of the 2001 budget. And I do believe there was a saving, a surplus for the, the two bids on it. So this is just something we like to, like to pass. And if, I guess, if we have any questions, the, I do believe the fire chief is here with us tonight. So can I have a mover on this? Can I have a mover? Counselor Vadavankar, Counselor Cummings? And do we have any discussion? Counselor Cummings?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a question, the $14,953, is that coming out of the Water Department or the Fire Department?
It's, the Water Department had a replacement project as well, counselor, in the budget. So that's coming out of their allotment for that capital project.
Perfect.
They're just, they're, they're just able to piggyback on for the savings in this program.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Any other comments or any other questions? Can I have a vote on this, please? All in favor? And Carrie? Thank you. And I guess I'll turn this back to Counselor Sanamah.
Thank you very much, Counselor Mayat. And so we will now move down to the referrals to the upcoming agenda for staff. The referrals that the Finance and Corporate Services Section endorse the following additional and existing referrals to upcoming agendas and staff. And the Huronia Airport Commission roadmap update. Now, I know we did have the update. Counselor LaRose? Does it stay on?
I believe I had asked for it to be removed, and I believe that council had asked that it stay on there till we came back with something else, I guess.
Go ahead.
Madam Chair, yes, I think that the, the item is remaining on, on the referrals. However, it should be, you know, it's a reminder, this isn't a report that'll be coming from staff. This is a report that will be coming from the Huronia Airport Commission themselves. So they've been tasked with that. So this is just a reminder that that's going to be coming in Q3 2021. So in our Q3.
Very good. Thank you very much. So if I could have, if I could have a mover, please? Mover and a seconder? Counselor LaRose, Counselor Mayat? All those in favor? Keep it on? Carrie? Thank you very much. No, no questions from the media or the public? Good. I shall pass it back to you, Madam LaRose.
Thank you, Counselor Sanamah. And before I just adjourn, at the request of the clerk, we've been asked all of council and staff to stay on. So Madam Clerk, we are all here.
Sorry, thank you, your worship. We can adjourn so that everyone can be on their way, and Rogers can go do their thing, and then we'll just get together to do that photo for the It Starts campaign.
Counselor Cummings, we are adjourned, right? Right?
Perfect, thank you.